Before we get started on the subcommittee reports, council, we have one add-on. It will be nineteen A and it's going to be a mid-year review of our finances. That report will be given to us by Janice and our chairman of our...
Document.
Yeah, there should be one, a document in front of you then that you'll be following. But it'll be with Janice and also Councilman. And just to make sure that the Hill School is off for tonight. Okay, that should be it. Subcommittee report, infrastructure.
No minutes.
No minutes?
Other than the last minute because we don't meet again until next Thursday.
Okay. Public safety, you're meeting on Monday?
Yeah, there is a minute, we met on this July fourteenth. I wasn't able to be there, but Councilor Miller chaired for me. So they're in there and we are also meeting on Monday.
Anything you want to add? I like...
In addition to the notes, no, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, economic development and business liaise on anything, Erica?
Sure. I just wanted to report that the Momentum, our quarterly design, that we work with Pottstown Area Industrial Development and our partners for success, which is a conglomerate of many community organizations. We have our second issue out right now. It's available on the borough's website under economic development and we have a section for Momentum and you can sign up to receive them automatically, but it covers a lot of different events and actually highlights the BMX races that will take place this weekend. So just wanted to get that out there. The Streetlight Project is just about finished in downtown Pottstown. So if you get a chance to go by at night, you'll see the new LED lights are out there shining. And the Chestnut Streetscape Project should be beginning soon. We're just getting approval from Montgomery County on the anticipated schedule, so just wanted to try five of those updates.
Okay, if somehow we can get word to the BMXers that we have a mini golf that's open for service.
Certainly.
Direct them down that way.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, transportation. We're going to be discussing, I guess, the airport FBOs that'll be coming up. Anything else, Councilor Miller? Okay. I'm looking at Councilor Miller only because Councilor Paul is the chairman of these committees and she's not here, she's on vacation, so. Okay, Ricketts Community Center, anything, Joe, you want to add to the...
We have the reports at our desk. Really nothing much more to report. The summer programs are well underway as far as the summer camp and basketball and the black tie basketball program. That's about it pretty much.
Okay, any questions for Joe? All right, it's with great honor that I announce that we have two officers that are going to be sworn in. And I'm sorry, I skipped over to school board, I didn't see it. It's sitting in front of you. Sorry, Mr. Williams.
Sure.
You're probably panicking thinking you were going to get sworn in as a police officer.
I do. Okay, at this time, construction on the Rupert Elementary Schools is progressing to the point that we are very hopeful that we'll be able to return our students to the South Street facility by the beginning of the school season. That isn't an absolute assurance yet, so we have contingency plans to continue in the event that the construction isn't completed, to continue over at the Morris Street location. So for the sixth year in a row now, Pottstown School District, in partnership with Step by Step Learning, will be offering a series of family literacy nights for students who are pre-kindergarten through fourth grade ages and their parents and guardians. This is a series of five sessions focusing on aspects of literacy learning. The evening consists of sessions designed to provide families with the skills to work with their children. Peak staff and volunteers provide programs for the students and childcare is provided as well. It's really kind of the, you know, there's games, there's treats for the kids, and at the end of it all, we gather the parents, the students, the families, and we have a closing session, prizes are given out, books, lots of books that are donated very generously to us for the purposes of getting our children involved in reading and getting their parents involved in teaching them the skills that are necessary for the learning. Now, recently, over sixty of our staff and faculty participated in the Pottstown Health and Welfare Foundation's Healthy Bodies, Healthy Minds Program. This event is designed to nurture interdisciplinary teams of educators and administrators in the adoption of physical activity as a learning tool. It isn't difficult to understand the benefits of creating a healthy environment in and around the learning environment and the impact that programs like this can have on the entire community. And speaking about the entire community, last evening was a great evening for Pottstown in so many ways. It was really great. Our community came together and while the naysayers may say that it isn't enough, it was a time to be proud of our hometown. The coordination and energy that went into the varied activities in and around our homes is commendable. While there are problems, as any community of our type will experience, there's much to be proud about Pottstown and the direction it is going in. And I think that last evening was an opportunity for our hometown to come together and express our pride in who we are and where we are going. I just want to say to the people of Pottstown, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any questions? Go ahead. I knew you were going to be giving a report on the powwow and so forth. You were on the agenda, I figured you were going to do it then at that point, so it's not likely to skip over you purposely. Now, it gives me great honor to introduce the swearing-in of two police officers, Brett Cortez and Matthew Macheski, chief... And I hope I pronounced your name.
That was pretty good.
Okay.
We don't seem to hire Smiths often anymore.
Don't want to start out on the wrong side with a police officer.
This is a police officer's oath to the Pottstown Police Department. Having been appointed as a police officer of the Borough of Pottstown in the County of Montgomery and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I...
Brett Cortez. Matthew Macheski.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth...
The Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And enforce all the laws thereof...
Enforce all the laws thereof.
Including those of the Borough of Pottstown...
Including those of the Borough of Pottstown.
And that I will support...
And that I will support.
Obey and defend...
Obey and defend.
And enforce these laws...
And enforce these laws.
Without consideration...
Without consideration.
To a person's race...
To a person's race.
Color...
Color.
Sex...
Sex.
Religious creed...
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation...
Sexual orientation.
Age...
Age.
National origin...
National origin.
Ancestry...
Ancestry.
Handicap...
Handicap.
Or disability...
Or disability.
I swear to discharge...
I swear to discharge...
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
With fidelity and honor.
With fidelity and honor.
This is now the reading of the police officer's warrant. This is to certify that I, Sharon V. Thomas, Mayor of the Borough of Pottstown in the County of Montgomery and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Borough Charter as amended and supplemented by the General Borough Act of nineteen fifteen and supplements authorizing a police force for boroughs and for other purposes and pursuant to appointments as a police officer by town council of this borough, have this day sworn Brett Cortez as a police officer of said borough and that he is authorized and empowered to make arrests upon probable cause with or without a warrant, subject nevertheless to the laws of Pennsylvania and of the United States. And that said, Brett Cortez shall serve as such police officer during the pleasure of the mayor and town council.
Good pleasure. Thank you.
This is to certify that I, Sharon V. Thomas, Mayor of the Borough of Pottstown in the County of Montgomery and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Borough Charter as amended and supplemented by the General Borough Act of nineteen fifteen and supplements authorizing a police force for boroughs and for other purposes and pursuant to appointment as a police officer by town council of this borough, have this day sworn Matthew Macheski as a police officer of said borough and that he is authorized and empowered to make arrests upon probable cause with or without a warrant, subject nevertheless to the laws of Pennsylvania and of the United States. And that said, Matthew Macheski shall serve as a police officer during the pleasure of the mayor and the town council.
so it should not be too long before we're there, so. Okay, we're going to have the presentation of the Pottstown Half Marathon with Sly Fox on Monday evening, and I'm going to turn it over to the chief and basically explain a little bit what this is about.
Thank you, Mr. Trony. Sly Fox, for those of you who don't know, has a running team or a track team that ironically every Wednesday night that we have a committee, the whole meeting at this moment, is running at the circle of progress. On July the eleventh of next year, Saturday, July the eleventh of next year, the club is proposing to post a half marathon in Pottstown. On Monday evening, members from the track club will be here to provide you with a presentation on what they would like to do and ask for your approval to move forward with their plan.
It's thirteen point one.
I believe so. Thirteen point one.
It will encompass most of the borough that will be...
Correct. Around the perimeter of the borough.
That's neat.
It is.
That's crazy.
Sly Fox has brought some very interesting events to Pottstown.
I could see Councilor Gary being a part of that running, possibly.
Yeah, the solicitor and I will be leading the front.
Okay, the Better Landlord Program, we have a presentation or there's documents, I guess, in your notes of the proposal, and I guess I'll turn it over to you and I guess Councilor Miller and also Councilor Coxel, you guys were in on the meeting, so anything that you can add?
The Better Landlord Program is a program that helps municipalities deal with problem properties, mostly rental properties. There was a presentation that was put before the Infrastructure Committee earlier this year or late last year, I can't remember which it was, and the recommendation was to explore, the recommendation to staff was to explore the possibility of the program being brought to Pottstown. Contacted the Better Landlord Program and they have offered a proposal to conduct the first phase of the program, which is the Municipal Services Study. It's a study that's designed to help us understand the nature and the scope of the issues affecting our neighborhoods as they relate to rental properties, but it's designed to dig not things we already know, but to dig into the very basic grassroots problems. The thing that I find most interesting about this is this study should help identify what I believe is probably going to be quite a few properties that are rental properties that have never been identified as rental properties. In fact, I believe they call them shadow properties, shadow rental properties. At any rate, the company has provided the proposal that you had before you, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, it's a one-time fee to conduct the study. We will have the data available to us. From that data, we should be able to move forward with the next step, which is to redesign our rental ordinances and possibly develop a Better Landlord Program whereby there's an educational component and possibly a discount for those who participate in their annual rental fees or their rental registration fees, but that's down the road. This would be the first stage. So the issue before you is to approve or not the expenditure of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars for the Better Landlord Organization to conduct the Municipal Services Study here in Pottstown.
Now, they're going to be going, I mean, how they want to discover the, are they just going door-to-door and just find out, find out the history of a paper trail of every resident, every house?
Keith, would you wish to comment on that?
What they're going to do is they're going to take information from the county tax assessment records, they're also taking information from in-house here from each department, EMS, fire, police, and also codes. They're going to correlate that information against each other and they have an algorithm that they've written into their program, which then defines certain parameters, and that's how it'll actually research those properties.
Do you know if it involves a visit to a property also?
No, it does not involve visiting a property.
Because things change, I mean, people, you know, make a residence into a rental property overnight and stuff like that, you know, without, we're all even known, so.
Correct, and some of those issues have been already identified, some of those properties have been identified already. We're working on a list of properties that are rental but are not registered right now. On top of what we're doing with the study, it would also help us better situate the whole scenario.
When you made the presentation to the committee, did they supply you with samples of reports that they prepared for other municipalities?
No, no, I have no other samples. Now, I don't know, Keith, Keith has that information?
Just the documentary that was recently submitted from Martha Bricky of the group, based on what we've talked about. What was submitted or what was brought forward by the Infrastructure Committee wasn't actually the Better Landlord Program. It was brought forward by some of the constituents here as an idea, and then once we listen to that, we can move forward with talking with Martha Bricky, going to reference to what they've done. They kind of want to use Pottstown as a pilot for basically the East Coast. They're based out of Utah, they've gone as far east, I think, as Ohio right now, but they want to start using this as a target area and try to help their program.
Did they provide any information on other municipalities that they conducted this study and then implemented the program for? Just the, it's a town Massachusetts. I know they're helping, no actual written information, but I do have some literature that I could give you if you'd like to see it.
How confident did you guys feel when...
He seemed like a, Mark seemed a very capable, intelligent guy, actually, I was impressed. I mean, I think we led them out with one question and he just talked for like twenty minutes and he seemed to be pretty astute.
Mr. Geer, they do have, throughout the United States, there are municipalities that have worked with them.
That's what I thought.
And through doing our research and whatnot, we were satisfied with the product they were providing.
You did point out that, I guess, other towns have approached them, but however, they're either in too bad a shape or they just weren't interested, and he's actually, he was very impressed with Pottstown.
I guess, you know, part of what I see from, you know, at least this initial phase of conducting this study is at the end of the day, even if we decide for whatever reason the entire implementation of the program may or may not be worthwhile, we still get the data...
Correct.
That identifies rental properties, identifies, I mean, what I think is really nice is the way it looks like it's going to be able to marry up fire calls, police calls to certain areas, and, you know, we can use that for fire response, police response, allocation of resources, allocation of expenses and things of that nature, so. I mean, all in all, it looks like a, from what little bit I know about it, it looks like a good idea.
The question, though, is when we get, when we get the study done, it's a paper copy study, correct, Keith? So how do we upload all that information now into our system to continue to track and monitor and stay current with?
I'm honestly not sure if it's strictly just a paper copy. I mean, if they give us the database and everything, it is information that we are paying for.
Right.
The algorithm, we're not going to get, we'll get the end results if it's in Access or Excel, we'll be able to import it into our databases here.
Okay, can you, when you say if, can you find out for sure if we're, if we are going to be able to import the information?
I can easily make that call.
It could be in part of the master properties, the new module we'll be working on, it could be...
So that's some of the cellular we have as far as... I mean, I think, Joe, I understand your concern, and eighteen thousand is a lot of money.
Yeah, I think, I think your data can be very useful. The only thing I'm concerned about is the ability to...
How accurate will it be?
Identify rental properties just by using paperwork.
And speaking of staff, I guess, you know, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars is a lot of money, but for what I've heard, it's actually a pretty good deal for what they're doing.
And I think we need to take it to the next step.
Right.
You know, in our, you know, identifying these properties, I mean, this is something we've been dealing with for years and years because, you know, it's such a big task to identify, you know, we even had one year interns going around trying to count meters, and you're right, you know, meters were being added as they left one property to the next, you know, so those are occurring and, you know, unfortunately, you know, we do the best we can with the resources we have, but I think this will take it to the next step.
I would suggest that, under the guidance of Keith, License and Inspection has done a good job recently of identifying properties that we weren't aware of. Typically, those properties are identified when a problem comes up. The water gets shut off or there's a sewage leak, that's how we discover it. So it's been piecemeal as we go through the process. I don't know that at the end of the day, no matter what process we use, if we will identify one hundred percent of the properties in the borough. But what I do know and what I believe from what I've seen that this company does, we're going to get a lot closer in this process.
Is there any funding or grants available for that? A possibility of anything, getting funding for that?
I would say probably not, however, I would suggest that with the mid-year adjustments that we're going to talk about towards the end of the meeting, we will have no problem covering that. It will not cost any extra money from reserves or any extra money to the taxpayer.
Can I just add, from the utilities end, we struggle not having an inventory of rental properties. So, Bob in particular, is you're really supportive of it, thinking that we're going to be able to get a final, a good inventory of what the rental properties are?
Because, I mean, it affects all of us at the end, I mean, if we're not charging them for trash, we're not charging them, you know, properly for sewage and water, you know, it's a, you know, it's a hit on all of us that we're paying that, you know, for those illegal rental properties and so forth. And you're right, sometimes we find them by accident, but all too often, we find them because an emergency cropped up and, you know, if the police don't even know, or the fire don't even know that there's another unit upstairs to even look for, you know, individuals, so.
I don't understand why the appropriation of Section Eight housing could not be the first pool of inventory taken because it's already accounted for at the county. And why that would not be accessible to us free of charge, I don't understand. And I'm just saying eighteen thousand five hundred dollars to get data when we can identify a root source cause, and any problem issues are definitely pointing to not who's a better landlord, but who's the worst and who needs to be addressed in these type of issues. I don't think it's really global. But if you start attacking the root of the problem and if you want to use a bulk warehousing, I don't understand why that's not accessible to us through the county. Because to me, if, you know, if any, any person who is receiving any type of subsidy to have renters should already be inventorying exactly who they are.
Because of the federal housing laws, and I certainly don't know the ins and outs of the federal housing laws, but what I do know is that the county does not freely volunteer properties that are voucher properties because of the protected rights of people under the Federal Housing Act.
The cost of federally protected rights should be funded by the federal government. We should come in and pay for this, you know, because in a year where we have people squawking about paying nine fifty a week for the bus, for school, that have to take their children to school, and then we can find money with no problem, eighteen thousand five hundred, to get data that we probably could in-house collect, but we could send this money to Utah to support others in another region instead of find a way to do it in-house, I'm just kind of wondering a little bit about it. Not, not against the process of it, but the expenditure and come, you know, budget season and beyond, will we be passing a tax increase to the very people who are paying extra now for the school bus rides, who probably aren't part of any of these meetings, but might be, might be renters, but could be homeowners as well? So I'm just voicing my sensitivity to those issues on the expenditure. And of course, many of you are well aware that I am in full understanding of the problems with the landlord-tenant relationships, mostly in those worst-case scenarios where problems are presented and posed to me. And try to get media on these issues to bring a global light to it so that those particular players in the federal government and subsidizing housing could be brought to record to bear in the responsibility of the administration of the complete process. And not leaving it to dangle as a possible cost, even though I heard no cost to the taxpayer, but there's no free lunch, we know that.
No, I'll address your two issues. One, you're seeking information about those who received vouchers for housing and...
Not necessarily those, but the landlords who are receiving.
Well, the landlords are the final recipient of those monies. And back in the beginning of the Blighted Property Commission, we went to the county asking for information so that we made narrower search, and that information is not privy to this borough. There's no way that they would tell us what properties they're supporting. As far as financing this particular project, our finance committee just met this afternoon, and our staff and everything else about the operation of the borough this year is such that we can afford it without having to affect the budget.
Okay. I just wanted to be on... I just wanted to be on record of saying that I'm sensitive to this type of issue because --
We're all sensitive to it.
Yes.
I, I think it's doable. If we tried to do this in-house, I don't think we could do it for $18,000.
We tried it for years.
Yeah. That's what I was, I mean, it seems to me most of the information that they're going to be gathering is probably publicly available somehow or another, but for us to take in-house personnel and dedicate them to tracking down all the information and compiling it means they're not doing their, you know, regular --
You could hire your man for $18,500 to --
Well, you also need somebody who knows where to go and what to, I mean --
Data miner.
Yeah. The other thing I would throw out is, I don't know how cookie cutter or boilerplate the letter agreement is that they're looking for us to sign, but kind of to Cheryl's point, I agree, at the end of the day, if we pay $18,000 for a binder of paper, that's good, but it's certainly not great. Why don't we ask, I don't care about the algorithms they use and all that, but if they can, I'm sure they are going to be compiling the data electronically.
Yeah, this day and age is so --
Yeah. Tell them we want the, you know, the access to the spreadsheets and all that so we can plug it into a system for, so that we can continue to update and monitor.
We will have that information for you before Monday night.
Great.
And one, one additional thing, too, is it's not that it's a free line chore, that there's no tax, there's no additional cost to the taxpayer. It's, it's already been paid by the taxpayer and it's this monies that either were, monies were saved in a budget area.
I hear you.
That we utilize that money, so. Anything else you want to add to that, Mr. Ween, with the finance on that?
No, no, we discussed this in finance and it looks like a good investment.
Anything else? This started, what, back, I guess, in January, February?
Yeah, it was early --
Yeah, so there was at least four or five meetings on this that went through our infrastructure committee, so it's not like this is brand new. This has been kicked around and you guys vetted through it and, you know, got a lot of research and, you know, I'm confident that our counselors are confident with the program, so that's going to be done.
Once we get the results, though, are we going to be able, because it's a once and done for the, for the data, are we going to be able to continue to monitor, like Joe's concern, new things that are happening? Is it going to change the way we look at things as codes to be able to pick up on those things a little easier? Will this data help?
I would expect that in the end, the answer to that is yes. I would have to see the product to give an affirmative answer, but I don't know why it wouldn't provide us with a tool to help us move forward.
I guess it's a good baseline to figure out where, you know, major hotspots, as they put it, in town to deal with it. Because they, even if that, if there was new people moving in, they often have similar characteristics in that, in those areas, so.
A lot of times in areas where we find some of these illegals, where there used to be parking and now there's no parking for, you know, vehicles and so forth, well, that's because there's, you know, either an additional family that have been there with two cars that, you know, parking sometimes in these tight areas is a premium. That's sometimes how they're found out, by residents calling up saying, you know, what's going on? I can't park here anymore, so that's, we still need to rely on our citizens, though, to see whenever, you know, this is going on, so that's our best resource. Okay, that will be listed with all the information extra that we requested for Monday evening. Number seven, the Olivet Boys and Girls Club Agreement. I guess this is you, Chuck?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Truney. As council knows, the original term of the agreement for leasing the Ricketts Center between the borough and Olivets expired at the end of last year. And since then, we've been working under essentially a month-to-month arrangement until we could present a lease that at least was vetted by staff and reviewed by the Olivet Sub Board of Directors. You should have some information in front of you concerning the lease. I would view the lease essentially as a five-year lease. Pretty much everything that can happen will happen in the first five years. If you approve the document, it would begin September 1st and the first term would conclude December 31st of 2019. During that time, the borough obligation would be to continue to fund the Ricketts Center at its present level of funding, which is $40,000 a year. That's obviously a lot less than the borough was spending on the Ricketts Center 10 years ago. The success of the Olivets has helped significantly in, in running programs and alleviating the borough some of that financial obligation, but certainly that's not the prime reason for the document. In the first five years, the borough, recognizing that the building has structural needs, is committing to redoing the roof and upgrading the HVAC system. We believe we can get community development block grants for that money and Erica has indicated that that would be a good source or a good project for those funds. If we do receive those monies, that offsets the borough's financial obligation for those years. So, essentially, in, in that five-year period that would be the initial term, the borough would upgrade the building so it would be functional. And during that first-year term, the Olivets could determine whether they want to continue a long-term use of the building. At this point, from our discussions with them, they've been somewhat, I guess, uncertain as to whether they want to invest long-term in the building and if they want to commit, but they believe within that five-year window, they'll know what they want to do. At the end of that five years, either party has the right to say the deal's over. So, at that point, the borough has the option and flexibility, if something else comes along or if it's just not working, either party can get out. Assuming it's going well, there is the right for extensions, for another five extensions of five years. So, it can be a long-term lease if everybody thinks the operation is functioning the way it should. I guess it's fair to say that both parties learned a lot over the first term of the lease. So, what we've tried to do in this document is make the borough responsible for the things that an owner would normally be responsible for. Capital improvements, structural issues, and the tenant would be responsible for the day-to-day maintenance of things within the center. Damage from vandalism, systems that need to be inspected and reviewed on a regular basis, repairs, minor and ordinary repairs. The only exception to the maintenance issue would be the borough would still remove the snow and the borough would still cut the grass. But other than that, all of the day-to-day issues associated with the running of the center would be the obligation of the tenant, the Boys and Girls Club. We understand that the, that the Board of Directors of the Boys and Girls Club has essentially approved the document. Obviously, we bring it to you for your input, your comment. We've worked on this probably since last September because we knew that this was expiring, so we put a lot of effort into it. Again, we tried to make it practical in the sense of how the document operates. It would require an investment by council for probably five years, frankly, because that would be the real term of the lease. And after that, then again, it's a question of what the parties want to do moving forward. So, I'd answer any questions. I know Keith's been involved, Erica, Mark, so we've all been working on this. Doug, so everybody's had their shot at looking at it and going through it, so it's your pleasure.
Questions?
I, I'm trying to figure out how to say this, but I know, I know we don't have many options on this situation. But in talking to people who worked at the Ricketts on a daily basis, they just feel that they're not getting the same rights and privileges that Olivets get in, in Riddick. There's, you know, they, um, yeah, I mean, I don't know how else to put it, I don't know how else to put it. You know, they, they just feel they're not being, being treated as they're being treated in, in Riddick.
I'm not sure that I'm qualified to respond to that comment.
I know, I know. I just put it out there.
I, I know, Joe, you've been --
They're not, they're not thrilled with a five-year commitment. You know, we all understand that's not too many options there available to us. But they said if, if, you know, if, if they start seeing equal representation, then they'll be thrilled with it. But right now, they're not seeing equal representation.
What about the individuals using the place, utilizing the facilities and so forth? Have you heard comments from them?
The only, the only comments about the, about the operation, about the open, you know, the hours and things like that, is a lot of parents just felt that there's no time for, the parents have spent their time with their kids. Everything's separate. You know, if the kid has something going on, the parent's not even allowed in the building during that time. That's, that's been a ongoing issue.
I think, is that Olivet's?
I guess it's a thing to protect children.
Right, I understand that, but it must be Olivet's, you know, mission or their, you know, how they operate.
So, our people have clearances.
Right.
This agreement really is just dealing with the facility itself. It doesn't, it really doesn't impact the program aspect of the center at all, right?
Other than Olivet operates.
Right. But, but we, through this, we don't direct the number of activities they provide, what activities they provide or when they provide.
Correct. And, and again, from my perception, sitting here over the last four or five years, when, when they first came in, I think the programs have improved, they've grown. I think, you know, even from Joe's comments, his monthly report, things have improved over time. We're obviously hoping that they continue to improve and expand and, you know, have more programs that would allow, you know, multi-generational to participate in whatever they can do. But again, the choice is really, at least they've been able to operate the center and they've been providing a service to the community. Certainly, if you have other thoughts, that's fine as well, but it seems to have worked for the last four to five years compared to some of the prior experiences we've had with other operators of the center, you know, going back before then, so.
Certainly. I have no idea what, what Olivet's plans are, but maybe one thing that, that will alleviate that is having a longer-term commitment in the borough, you know, might be an incentive to them also to ramp up some programs.
During our negotiation, then again, we were talking with the executive director and his successor and not necessarily the board of directors, but one of their concerns was they, they really wanted to get their feet on the ground in the community for a longer period of time. They, they were insistent that that first five-year term would give them the opportunity and the time needed to whether or not they were going to be able to be stable, raise funds in the community, you know, really become a permanent fixture in the community. And, and that's what they, they wanted. And part of the lease agreement is that the borough's committing to upgrade the roof and the HVAC system so they have a functional building and certainly then everything there if it can work. And if at the end of five years, it, it can't work, well, then you can part ways. But I know they were talking about fundraising efforts and doing things, you know, once they got the new lease in place, so they knew they had some time to do that. They realized they can't make this happen overnight.
The sad part is that roof has been in such bad shape for years. I mean, it's a shame it's taking a lease for us to take our obligation and finally get it done and completed and repaired because we own the building and we should be, you know, doing something to make sure our building and our assets are being preserved. So, it's, that itself is a good thing, so I'm glad to see that, you know, Erica's confident that we can get some redevelopment money or community grant money, I should say, to do some of this. But that's been a nightmare for years. I mean, that roof's been leaking, Doug, what? I mean, I remember being out there in 2000 and there was issues with it, so.
It's unfortunate that you totally, all the units --
Yeah, well, that's the problem, all the units are up on the roof and that's the worst thing you can do because that vibration just rips the roof up, so. Any other questions?
I'm sure Joe knows it from his involvement in interacting with the center and I drive by there practically every day, taking my kids to and from school for some activity and there's always something going on there. You know, there's, you know, kids out playing basketball, kids playing kickball, people coming in and out, so it certainly is a, seems to me, a vital benefit to the community.
Yeah, that's, that's due to, you know, you have Dan Burgess, you know, she's very good at day-to-day operations and she runs it very well, you know, but I still stand by my previous comment.
With that, I don't know how we could address that, Joe, other than if you have a conference with, you know, since it is in your ward, you know, wanted somebody from the Olivet. You know, I don't know how you --
Yeah, possibly. Can you talk to them?
Anything else? Okay. It'll be listed for Monday evening. Family Dollar Store Land Development Plan, this is Chuck's.
Yeah, this, council had approved the land development plan for Family Dollar probably more than a year ago. And as typical, council includes that when the approval is with conditions, there's a time limit to satisfy the conditions. Contacted by the attorney for Family Dollar, indicated that they're still not in receipt of their PennDOT permit, but they understand it is going to be issued very shortly. The time period for satisfying the conditions, I think, expires sometime in the middle of this month. They've asked for a 90-day extension so they have time to satisfy that condition. And again, typically, there's no reason not to grant an extension when a developer's in the process of actually applying and trying to get outside agency permits and approvals. Typically, PennDOT and DEP take a lot more time than some people want to admit, but in this case, they're confident they'll get those permits, but they don't have them just yet. So, until they get their permits, they can't record their plan and they can't begin construction. So, they're asking for council to approve a 90-day extension so they can secure their approvals.
Any questions? I don't know if it has any bearing on it, but I, you know, maybe the work that was being done on Hanover Street certainly may have held things up a little bit, so I don't know. Okay, the Hill School Housing is off, the FlexPave project. Once again, this went through our infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Truney. The, if you recall, the borough had donated some of the waste management money to Trees Incorporated for the purpose of repairing tree-damaged sidewalks throughout the borough. One of the projects that Trees Incorporated has brought before us is to consider the potential of using a product called FlexiPave on the tree surrounds. The, Mr. Hilton from Trees Incorporated did a presentation or made a presentation to the infrastructure committee. If you recall, I believe it was last month's minutes, the recommendation was made by the infrastructure committee to allow Trees Incorporated to move forward with a test project of the FlexiPave in the borough. We have received an application, which I believe copies were in your packets, for the area of North Hanover Street. If you have any questions, I believe Mr. Hilton is here to answer those questions from Trees Incorporated.
Anyone from the infrastructure as far as the commenting on the product or anything? I mean, we all saw it last month, but you've been involved a little more than we were.
Yeah, I've spoken to Mr. Hilton several times about it and, you know, I'm confident in it and it's probably was used in our parks in DC and it's --
One of the conditions that infrastructure placed on this moving forward was that criteria or requirements from the borough, since we don't have FlexiPave as a permitted material in our ordinance, that the borough should develop specifications and requirements. Those should, were also included in your packet. Mr. Yurder, Public Works reviewed the project, the product, and provided the requirements which you were given. And I've been advised that there should be no problem in adhering to those requirements, although some of the verbiage may be different as far as the way pressures are measured. Nonetheless, at the end of the day, there's no problem meeting those standards. I believe that's correct.
And the reason to need your approval is because it's not an approved product in the borough ordinance, so this is pretty much a one-time test case and you'd be approving it moving forward if you want to make it permanent. You can do that by changing your ordinance.
I guess my only question would be is, is how do we go about choosing which area we were going to do a test patch?
I can't answer that because we didn't, but maybe Mr. Hilton did because Trees Incorporated did.
Hanover Street because, well, first of all, when we did asphalt remediation, our first choice was High Street and Charlotte Street because they are the most heavily-traveled pedestrian streets. pedestrian streets in Pottstown. They're for the most visible and the most need of remediation. They've been mostly done. The ones we haven't done in Hanover and, or in, on High Street and Charlotte Street are simply because we need property under provision and sometimes we don't get it. Hanover Street is another highly-visible street. There's churches there, lots of pedestrians, particularly on Sundays, people standing out. High, Hanover Street has a very wide sidewalk, so it's not necessary to put the Flexi-Pave anywhere near the buildings, doesn't butt up against the buildings. So it would be very visible, easy to put it in because it's a, it's a wide sidewalk, and it's, it's, all the streets that are left in Pottstown is the one that's, has the, the most visibility.
Tom, one question. On the new paving that you've put down on the sidewalks on Charlotte Street, it looks like they used a finer macadam?
Last year, they were getting the macadam from Sanatoga. And towards the end of the project last year, one day the Sanatoga plant closed down and they went to Bechtlesville and discovered by accident that Bechtlesville had a finer grain. So the last few ones we did last year were finer grain. This year, having learned from last year, they went to Bechtlesville for the top coat, so that's why it looks finer.
And you think that'll be better than the, the courser? Because the courser, to me, seems like it would allow more water to go down through, whereas the finer is really compacted. It's almost like a concrete that at that point. I mean, it'll flex, it's not going to crack, but...
It's a, it's a better surface for, for the epoxy to adhere to, and it's more close, close to the, like, the greenways or, or that finer surface. So we're getting closer to what we would see typically in the Greenway or the Hill School Quad or various other places where you see asphalt locally. So we're just trying to meet what was there.
Right, because the epoxy definitely held up from last winter. I mean, that was amazing. I thought for sure that would be worn off with the salt, so it ended up pretty good through the winter.
And so one of the supports for this project is there is the potential for grant funding to get more sidewalks completed.
Yes, the reason we're using Flexi-Pave, even though it's more than twice as expensive as asphalt, is because Flexi-Pave is porous. There are various state agencies very interested in creating infrastructure, the Department of Conservation, Natural Resources, the Environmental Protection Agency, and so we were the first municipality to use Flexi-Pave and hasn't been used in this state. It's been used in Maryland extensively and Washington DC, but hasn't been used here. So we're the first to do a demonstration. Then if we make a proposal to get state funding for sidewalk remediation with Flexi-Pave, we have an opportunity to get a grant where, as with an impervious surface, whether it's concrete or, or asphalt, it's not going to happen.
Thank you, Tom.
And just one last question, Tom. Will there be grass growing up through this? I mean, is that a possibility with the Flexi-Pave?
They did a, in Connecticut, they did a, a trail, and there was a little grass that grows through it, but with, in sidewalk situations where there's pedestrian traffic, it doesn't, it doesn't last.
Any other questions?
Steve, I'll make an observation. If it's permeable, the borough gets to add in another line on the MS4 the next time that comes around.
Right. All right, so then Monday evening, we'll be voting on, I guess, this initial trial run here, so. Okay, the Pottstown Regional Library, Public Library, if you remember, at the last meeting, Mr. Green came before us looking for a letter of support, and basically that's what, this will be, a letter of support for Keystone Brand. Any questions on that? PennDOT Capital Grant Transit Amenities, I guess this is you, Erica?
Sure.
You might as well do the bike racks and everything else, and I guess final right with the Big Bellies.
Lots of transportation. As far as capital for Park, we have two projects that we had discussed conceptually moving forward. One is the installation of bike racks on our buses. Just with everything, the multimodal movement that is going on, walking bike Pottstown, and just with advertising the buses and talking with the community and riders, we think that that would be a nice addition to the buses now. So that's one aspect of our request. So we'll be seven bike racks. We've looked at the Gillig Low Floor buses that we have in service now, and we found a, a style that would work nicely with that. The second project is a little bit different. We're working on a pretty involved bus shelter grant program. The Victorian bus shelters that are red and green in downtown Pottstown, they were installed in 2008, and we are looking to install solar panels and retrofit them to the existing bus shelters. In addition, the bus shelters that are blue, that were from the late 1980s, in the surrounding sections of the route system, are going to be actually replaced with those Victorian shelters. But in our effort to use solar power and thinking about the sustainability of the downtown, a lot of times, you know, I take walks, Doug and I, we've talked about this, and there's lots of cleanups going on, but we've noticed this pro, this receptacle called a Big Belly, a Smart Belly. There's two types. They're actually solar-powered receptacles for trash compaction and for recycling. So the borough doesn't offer that right now in the downtown, and currently, we did an inventory of all the trash cans in the downtown as well, and we just have these 34-gallon receptacles, and it's, you know, a constant effort to get them cleaned and, and cleared and picked up. We have a five-day cycle in order to do that. So in an effort to look at that, we've explored the possibility of a, of a pilot program for the downtown. And essentially, these Smart Bellies are, they have a cellular device attached to the unit, and Doug, Public Works, or, you know, Padita, who, we could work on actually tracking the usage in the downtown for both the trash and the recycling. So it's a pretty interesting product. So Park can help with the component that is next to these different bus shelters in the route system, which is, is that dense portion of the downtown that we know there's a need for. So that would be 10 units. So we have that as our proposal for Park, but also, we would look and ask for, you know, your thoughts and approval to consider exploring the possibility in our upcoming trash contract, and also, I think, within the trash fund, to look at a possible way of adding another 10 and putting 20 out into the downtown to work with Sheila Dugan of Padita and, you know, the EAC's efforts so that we, you know, lead sustainability with the solar panels and try and really focus on that Clean and Safe Streets Initiative. So this is just one part of, you know, our research and our, you know, concept to put this out there. We did look at a few other communities, Westchester being one of them. Westchester's Business Improvement District in May installed 60 units. They received a $300,000 grant through Chester County, and we met, we looked at those units, and you can tell, walking around, you see these containers. The containers are, the recycling's 50 gallons, the compaction's 150 gallons, and we could likely look at going from five collections to one collection per week. But of course, we'd have to look at all that, but there could be a tremendous savings to the borough in terms of our trash contract. So we're just looking at the possibility. Welcome to answer any questions on that. Doug and I are looking at that currently, so.
Questions?
EAC has seen Big Belly around for a couple of years. They're heavy urban usage, and apparently they're still working fine in places where we've seen them, so.
Yeah, we have looked at these years ago.
Yeah.
You know, I was a member of the EAC in the mid-2000s, and, and yeah, they're expensive.
Yeah, they're, they're an investment.
One of the things I think that has, has really helped a lot is the telemetry is a lot more advanced, I'm sure, than what it was. It used to be, it was basically a solar unit, you just put it out there, come over and check it.
Not wanting to put a fly in the ointment, but we're almost going to have to locate these in areas where the sun can hit them, you know, so some of the...
That is true, and when we did our tour of Westchester...
Glad Mr. Hilton...
And, and Westchester has quite a canopy, and they're downtown, so Doug, you took up, you had that concern as well.
Right, and that concern too.
Yeah.
And they only have one out of all the ones they have that they have to move because the canopy covers. So even, and the factory people tell me, as long as there's a recent bell light still around the thing, it'll still charge the battery up.
So it's a battery op, it's a solar charging the battery?
Yes, solar charges the battery and then that operates. When it gets to a certain level, it smashes it.
So for us, you need to just give a group of, for moving forward?
Approval to move forward with the concept and put together a potential pilot.
Okay. Might as well stay up for the next one, which is the Pottstown Municipal Airport FBO.
Sure, okay. Last week, actually, gosh, Monday, we received our proposals for the Pottstown Airport Fix Base Operator, and we have a lot of things happening at the airport. I've been reporting on our pretty comprehensive runway rehabilitation project, and our current FBO has other plans. So we put together a proposal, and we've received two qualified candidates, Weston Incorporated, they come to us from Bardo, and we also received one from Fair Share Limited. Fair Share Limited comes to us from Limerick and Heritage Field Airport. So we have provided those proposals for you to review. At this point, staff has reviewed the content of those proposals, and we ranked them. In terms of just briefly going over the major components, Fair Share Limited, they have a very professional customer service plan, business plan. They want to continue the flight school operations at the airport, all of the different things that come in line with the pilot shop. They have some new ideas about some new business enterprises for the airport and aerial photography business, looking at the concept of having a car rental attached to the airport. But I think what's significant about their proposal is that they, they want to renovate the current terminal office and make some pretty modern improvements, adding a technical computer section for navigation for all the pilots that would come in, set up the self-service fuel facility at the airport. So they put together a pretty strong proposal, and we ranked them at, at the first. Secondly, Weston Incorporated, they had, they come to us with a background in business, in some other businesses, and they have experience in aviation, but they're very maintenance-focused, which is, which is a good thing, but, you know, they, they cover a lot with the current lights, mowing, snow plowing, that sort of thing, which the borough does contracts now. So those, just a few of those differences and key points I wanted to provide. So, you know, we're pleased with having two qualified candidates. We would ask for next week to move forward with a negotiation process based on the ranking for that. So definitely welcome to take questions on, you know, the process, the content of those proposals and our plans to move forward.
Just so council knows too, Councilor Miller and myself sat in on the, going over the review and so forth. Two of the other councils that sit on the infrastructure, on the transportation, were not available that, at that time, so I jumped in and helped review these, and it was consensus that the ranking that was given would be Fair Share and then the other one, Weston. So that would be our recommendation. Certainly, you can speak to yourself as far as what went on, Councilor Miller.
Yeah, no, no, we're in agreement that the recommendation is Fair Share.
We also had Deb Penrod.
Yes.
From Minnesota, was it Minnesota or?
Montana.
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 She was on speakerphone.
Yeah, I talked to her again today, and she expressed her support. She wanted to give, you know, some additional comments and thought to it, and, you know, just coming from her standpoint, also, I think I, I missed the, Fair Share is also interested in potentially adding a cat diner restaurant at some point, which is, you know, looking at the field of aviation and really diversifying what, you know, is offered in the airport besides general aviation and the flight school. There's just a nice energy happening in the circle of progress in the airport business campus. So they, they feel that, and they, and I think that Deb recognizes that as a member of the airport community, a pilot, and with the associations that she speaks with, so, so I think that's a good thing.
And her recommendation was?
Fair Share.
Moving forward with, with the agreement, though, is there a term limit set upfront or?
Right, right. We will negotiate that because based on these circumstances, I think we would want to look at, you know, a phasing in perhaps, and maybe, you know, a length of time, given some terms, some options. Initially, I think we looked at the 10-year, asking for a performa and business plan for 10 years, but it doesn't mean that's what we have to commit to. So I'll be working with Chuck and with everyone, we can begin to draft something that meets the borough's needs, so. But it, it looks like they want to make some substantial capital investments, so we'll have to figure, figure that out.
Yeah, the previous FBO took us to a level that it stabilized the airport, and I think these, this company is definitely going to take it to the next level, and certainly, I mean, Dan, you can look at their business plan, it's quite impressive throughout through the airport, and I think they're going to do a good job for us.
Okay.
So Monday evening, we'll be voting on moving forward with negotiations with the ranking with Fair Share, okay? How about, now, Mr. Williams?
Secondary comment. I could have made this real simple, like, say, please. So during the first week of May earlier this year, the community of Native Americans came together in our borough to share through song and dance and food, a cultural experience that, as, has been repeated to me often, was very well-received throughout the region and was considered to be a, a successful inauguration of a season of joyous activity in Pottstown. The powwow on Manitani Creek was a collaborative effort supported and encouraged by this council, the Pottstown Parks and Recreation Foundation, Pots Grove Manor, Art Fusion 19464, and encouraged through the generosity of the Skookoo River Heritage Area and the O'Connor family of the Humphreys Flag Company. We learned a few lessons from this effort. Mostly, we learned that we need to start our planning and coordinating a lot earlier than we did last year. With that thought in mind, I'm respectfully requesting permission to use the Pottstown Memorial Park again on May 2 and 3 of this, of this coming year, 2015, for the purpose of presenting this community with the Second Annual Powwow on Manitani Creek. It is my hope and desire that this celebration will become an annual event and one of the trademarks of our borough. I'd also request that the council consider a waiver of the fees similar to those approved for the powwow held earlier this year. Questions?
Yeah, what's the, the waiver and so forth? Did, was that before or after we went through the, I'm looking at Mark, did Mike go through and set up a fee schedule for all that?
That fee schedule will come to council per January. It suggests that you put that portion on hold until we...
Yeah, we may have looked at that.
Consider it held.
Small steps.
Get the date reserved.
Yep.
That's the same weekend as May, Harry.
Yep.
Yes, it is.
There's something else that's going on.
We worked with, well, there was the classic car show.
Car show.
So we, we worked with the Pots Grove Manor on that, and, you know, we'll collaborate with it again, or with them again. I think Laura has been an incredible supporter of what we're doing.
It's the same day as July, Mark.
What's the GovRaces that going on? I knew there was something.
That's great, that's a great kickoff.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, number 15, the Iron Horse Show, June 27th. I see Mr. Bainbridge.
Mr. Bainbridge is here.
Yeah, so I'm asking the council to let us close down two blocks of High Street on June 27th, 2015, for the Fourth Annual Iron Horse Show. In years past, we've donated money to the cluster. This past year, it was Wounded Warriors. Second year, it was Padita. The event brings people into the community. Our event is actually tagged Lansdale Bike Night. Lansdale Bike Night being the last of three events, but ours, here in Pottstown, is the first, so we moved from 19 bikes to start to 43 bikes this past year. start to 43 bikes this past year. Any questions?
Last year, there was no issue with the police or anything?
No.
Okay, so you're listening Monday evening.
Would that date be the same as the volleyball next year?
That would be, yes.
Wow.
Same day as, well, I, I talked to Sheila, in fact, Sheila mentioned it to me, and then I talked to Kenny Cass, who just happens to be my wife's nephew, and he says it's a great idea, so, you know, we're kind of piggybacking even like the Palau, and that's, that's cool, when you have more events.
Well, it's good that we're finally starting to collaborate these events together, yes.
Sooner or later, we're going to hit it.
That's great.
Just get something on every weekend.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this next item was brought at a request by Councilor Miller, and what this is going to be to form an ad hoc committee to review our ordinances that we currently have in the books for animals and so forth, their safety, also, I guess, the safety of the individuals that also own them and so forth. It will consist of Councilor Miller as the chair, and any other councillors that would want to sit on this committee, if there are no others, I certainly would join in, so she's not by herself, and then any other staff as needed, the direction of her manager, and then also Chuck Warner would be the solicitor reviewing as we review this and so forth. Turn it over to Cheryl, the ad wife, she would like to say on this subject.
Turn it over to me, because, because animal safety is a, is a huge issue in our borough, and it's, it's actually a huge issue everywhere, and I think it's one that's overlooked, and I don't think that there's many protections in place currently for the safety of animals. So I am a huge animal rights advocate, and this is something I'm very excited about, and I'm really looking forward to working with Mr. Toroni, and I'm very happy that this council, this management is open to new ideas, and they help propel new ideas forward and, and momentum, and they're very supportive, so I'm very proud to be working with this group, and I'm very excited about this committee.
Some of it too will be tied into economic development, because, as you know, in the fall, we have the pet fair, and we certainly get a lot of people to come to that and so forth, so this is, you know, near and dear to a lot of peoples and so forth, so we'll make sure that we build upon that, so.
And, and we have 83 vendors already for this year's pet fair, and we're nearing 100.
Okay. Zoning, 211 North York Street, Sullivan Aglucci.
Mr. Toroni, it appears from the application that was submitted that will be heard by the zoning hearing board on Wednesday, August 20th, the property is located at 211 North York Street. According to the application, the first floor is presently some type of commercial unit, and the request for relief is to permit the first floor to be turned into a residential unit. There's not sufficient size on the first floor, per the zoning ordinance and the apartment unit, that would be created would also be undersized. Looks like the application indicates there's slightly less than 600 square feet on the first floor, minimum apartment or unit size in the borough is 800, so they're looking for variances both for the, the unit size as well as the fact that the minimum square foot on the first floor is not adequate as well. So it's up to council.
Whose word is this, the second?
My word.
Oh, yours?
Yeah. And I think there's really a good reason that we have the ordinances in place, that we do have, and that council created ordinances to protect places from being broken down yet into apartments. So it's my recommendation for a letter of non-support for this action.
For those of you who are trying to think where this is at, if you know where C and T, the sandwich shop is, at the corner of York and Beach.
Beach and York, C and T.
Yeah, the sandwich shop, it's the one, it's building before that, on York Street.
On York.
Yes, York and Second.
It's on the same side as C and T, but it's building before, and it's, used to be a store of some sort before, it's got glass windows, I don't know what it was, so.
And just so council's aware, obviously, the zoning hearing boards are public meetings, and if council votes to send a, a letter of opposition, certainly it doesn't preclude any councillor from, you know, appearing, and Councilor Miller, if you'd like to, council can authorize you to appear and oppose it in person if you want, certainly the zoning hearing board likes people there in person as opposed to letters, but that's always an option as well.
Any other comments? Well, it'll be listed as a letter for denial, and then council will vote on it as they see fit. The next one is 76 North Franklin Street, Empire Hook and Ladder Company.
Yes, and this is an application that was filed seeking a variance with respect to use. This is a traditional town neighborhood zoning district, and as noted, is the former Empire Hook and Ladder Fire Company building. And the proposal by the gentleman who's a doctor, has the property under the agreement, is to use it as an indoor recreational facility with limited hours of use, no external improvements are being sought, and I don't know if you have the full application, but there's a rather detailed explanation of the individual that wants to become involved. He's a physician, chief of general internal medicine at Langton Hall, he's on the board of trustees, and he wants to purchase the property for essentially recreational use, teaching youth softball and other related skills. So it's a, it's a rather unusual use, but frankly, it's a rather unusual building, so again, need zoning relief, and sounds interesting at least.
And that puts that property back on the tax rolls.
That'd be correct, yes.
And whose word is this? Any thoughts?
I think it'd be a good use for, and it's, I don't like seeing vacant buildings, and it's kind of, like you said, it's an unusual building. I'm glad it has the capacity to, you know, be able to do their activities there.
Yeah, I'm glad too, seeing that as a use versus, I mean, it's right for an apartment building, because it's got the parking there and it could be divided up real easy, and it's, we don't need more units in that congested area down there, so, I mean, would you like this to be listed as a letter of support for this project, or just?
I think I would.
Okay, the next is board appointments. We have the Code's Board of Appeal, there's one three-year term, and who's up, Jenny? Andrew, and he's requested to re-up?
Yes.
Okay. And certainly, we don't have to appoint him, but since he would like to do it, unless some other councillor has someone else they have in mind, we will vote, be voting on Andrew. The next one is the EAC, there's two three-year terms, I know one is Jim, and you did submit to re-up, and who else is up on that?
Daniel Mensch.
Daniel Mensch?
I, yes, and I have not gotten a copy yet verbally. I've gotten an assurance that, that you should get a, a notice of interest from Lynn DeWitts, who is a 20-year resident of Pottstown, who's worked in the environmental industry, so.
If you can get, if we can get that.
He has come to a few meetings.
If we can get that, you know, letter of view.
Kind of need that right.
Yep.
Ask him to take care of that detail and give them yours and Jenny's emails, I believe, to, to send it to.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not going to be able to make Monday's meeting, so if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take, take this opportunity.
Would your committee be in favor?
I would hope so.
Okay, any other questions for him? Okay, thank you. Harv, oh, I'm sorry, Human Relations, one five-year term.
I think we have one individual who has just failed to submit their letter, but they're continuing on the committee, so I'll try to get that by Monday, confirmation letter.
Well, that would just be your appointment anyway, we would just confirm it. Harv, we have 239 Chestnut and 935 High Street, was the minister of La Coruña, but 239 High Street, or Chestnut, any questions on that one? Okay. That will be listed for Monday evening. And 19A, we have the, Janice, to give us our mid-year report on finances.
I handed out to the finance committee earlier the adjustments that we made, revenues and expenses. As we went through the expenses, there were a couple of positions that had been budgeted that weren't filled, so that gave us some funds to move around. So included is the landlord, I forgot what the name of that's called.
Really on the program.
Yeah, so we added that in, and also Erica's.
Engineering design for the mud shelter program.
Right. I can, what I plan to do is send all the funds, the budget adjustments electronically by Friday, so you have the weekend to look at them, if you have any questions, you can ask them Monday. Everything seems to be going along quite well.
Anything you want to add, Mr. Williams, the chairman?
The only thing I would say, something I tracked from cutting out of the factory, was reported in our meeting this afternoon, we're at about 60% of the year, we've collected 71% of the revenue, and only expended 56% of the expenditure as we anticipated.
Thank you.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-six. Okay, so this will be listed as far as all the adjustments that are being made, and that's what we will be voting on, so we have time to review this till Monday evening, and then.
And what it's done is it just kind of where we thought we weren't going to spend some money, or we spent some more, and then from this point forward, as Mark and I sign the checks, we'll have flags if something is absolutely over, going to be over the budget, that's how we monitor from here to the year end.
And considering the winter we went through, I mean, with overtime and plowing and use and soul and everything else, and breaking equipment, it's quite admirable that we're at where we're at.
The department heads.
All these transfers are inter-fund, they are not from fund to fund, so we stay within funds.
You can do inter-department, but you can't change the bottom line.
Right.
But it's, yes, it's attributed to all the department heads working together.
Good stewardship.
Did you start by saying that there was unfilled positions that created the money that you can move around?
Yes. They're being, they're working, in fact, they're doing interviews, I believe, this week.
And how many positions were in total of, how much surplus?
I know there definitely was one in the licensing and inspection department, one in my finance department, we're switching some things around, and I believe one in the traffic works.
If you find any questions you have, fire them, questions off to Mark, and he'll make sure that Janice gets the answers on those if he doesn't have them. Okay, comments from citizens present.
Good evening to everybody. There are a couple of quick things happening in town, and if I'm rightly informed, there's a miniature golf course and also the new public works project, the building up in West High Street, off West High Street, and if I'm rightly informed, they're both will be paid for by grant monies and not by taxes. That's what I've been told. But there are some of us residents who don't quite see everything as quite right and good in this town, and for example, some people at the ward meeting last week, and I on my own of late, have asked the borough about very weedy properties here and there, let go. Now, to me, weedy properties, I mean, even a property at your house, this is not a very costly thing to take care of. In fact, yours truly at 69, I was some galley feet, I'm out there with a mower, it's self-propelled, but I still have to walk behind it all around the yard, and it actually helps the gout, by the way, but I'm doing it myself. Yes, I laugh too, yes, right. But these, the general answer to these other properties seems to be, well, we can't see these things, and you have to tell us, which is true. And I was told that one such property was like that for a long time, and I don't know what that meant. Feeling your weeds grow in the backyard for 15 years, is that all right? I don't know. All right, so no weeds can be seen, but a man I know, his house not blighted and fallen down, he was advised to take care of some maintenance measure, not a, not a great deal of it, but this was found out, this was seen by a borough employee, and you have to look way up to heaven to see this. Now, most of the weed problems are down in the ground, you know, you could possibly see them better. I don't know many people on my street, Friday, North Adams Street, riding up the street and looking up, but maybe that's a good sign, borough employees are always looking up in life. And this man has all his taxes and water bills, except for the one due at the end of this month, paid, and he's, he's, I'm going to say an obscene word here, excuse me, it's obscene word in the mercury every day, in the Sound Hall, low income. Low-income people are supposed to be bad in this town, according to Sound Hall people. He's kind of low-income, but he pays all his taxes and water bill, and he doesn't have extra money to pay for a larger amount of maintenance or repair like this. Now, there's always grant money for a golf course, or a $3.8 million public works project, but I know of no grant money, maybe you can help enlighten me here, to help this man or a number of other people, there are a number of other people in town like this, or there's grants where you have to jump through a hoop or run into a stumbling block to get the money. And this man, like many others, is a long time, in fact, he's, he's had this out 31 years, very concerned to, to keep it up, doesn't want it to fall apart, but he can't see how. Is there any help? I don't know. Too bad if this man living here all, all his life, and a homeowner all those years, he's not a fly-by-night, he's not one of those bad rental people that some people talk about here, but he is low-income, that's a terrible thing, I know. I don't know what low-income means, by the way, in this economy, but it'd be terrible if he decides to just sell and move away. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Bruce. One thing, just for your point of reference, the borough garage is not being paid with grants. That was a loan we took out to build that, so.
Oh, well, thank you for clarifying that.
I mean, we would have loved to have grant money, but those grants don't exist.
Well, yeah, that's why. You're going to get a grant for the roof on the Ricket Center though, for tri-force.
Yeah, we're going to try.
Try.
You know, whether or not, because there's parameters that fit, you know, all those different types of grants, I mean, certainly there's, you know, like with transportation with the airport, you know, federal monies and pent-up money, you know, for repaying the runway, but we can't get our streets, extra money to do the streets, so it's, it's unusual how the grant process is set up.
I'm being kind tonight, and I won't say who told me that the grant money is covering the public works project, but I scratched my head, which is already getting bold, and I said, gee, they got grant money for, it's 3.8 million, you know.
Well, it's, it's going to be close to that, but.
Around that.
Exactly.
Not a grant.
But it's not a grant.
An ordinary citizen has a hard time getting $1,000, $2,000 grant, you know what I mean? So, thank you for.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bedera.
Diane Crump?
Hi, how are you tonight? Amongst money and my other things, I volunteer for Colbrook Down Railroad, and I will be manning the tables, selling stuff tomorrow at Rita's, and I ask people to join the preservation, and I'm always happy to be able to tell them about things that they can do because, in Pottstown, they always say, well, what can we do in Pottstown? Unfortunately, several times, I've had the remark, well, is it safe in Pottstown? And I said, of course it's safe in Pottstown. I think the Good Neighbor Program will be good for Pottstown with the perception. Before the presentation, at the beginning of the year, I was, read their information, and then I put my computer, which I love, and I read about towns in Texas, towns in Adley, California, other towns in Utah besides Od, Odin, and that started. Adley, California, other towns in Utah, beside Oz and it started, very positive. Then I turned around and tried to find negatives. And I honestly found no negatives on the computer about their program. I think, just like the railroad, it would be a very good thing for Pottstown. It would not change anything instantaneously, but I think that within a couple of years, it will change that, like, oh, well, perception. Mr. Flanders, you had a meeting a couple of years ago about how drug dealers find Pottstown to be a great thing of intersection. I think it will be going the opposite. Oh, we don't want to come to Pottstown because they keep a hand on everything. So please consider the Good Neighbor Program, because it really would be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Heath?
Good evening to everyone, good to see you again. I wanted to particularly address some remarks to President Chironi. I'm very dismayed to hear of any criticism or negativity that occurs, and it would be very easy for me to be negative in commenting on this, but rather, I wanted to take a positive track. And I want to thank you for everything that you do for the community and have been doing for decades. How long have you been councillor, sixteen years or, I don't know, something?
But I've been involved since the mid-nineties.
Yeah, with other different things, with all the committees and really generally speaking to all of the councillors. It's obvious to everyone that you're here twice a month to be at the council meetings and to the mayor as well, that you're here twice a month, but I understand that you also give your time in committees, in conferring with others to find solutions, to research the things that the committees are addressing. And I value every hour that you spend for the borough, and I just really wanted to be out there for that appreciation of what you do. I appreciate staff too, but after all, you are paid, so you, I mean, that equalizes a little bit, but we could not pay you enough to Mrs. Tocic, Mr. Flanders, even to Chuck, who's not a full-time Pottstown employee. The work that you do is very crucial, it's important, it's adding to the positive effects that are taking place. And the other staff that's here, Janice, Doug, God bless Doug Yurger with this terrible winter year, I was praying for Doug Yurger in his department because it was a tough year. And then for Erica as well, I appreciate all of you. But for those who are essentially volunteers, you're paid the smallest stipend imaginable and yet proportionately, you do such a great amount of work. It should be said, thanks, and thanks again. I thank also your wife, Barb Chironi. We had a time of need and were without a tax collector, and we humbly went to her on bended knee to ask if she would serve yet again, and she did. And that's really an incredible thing. I just can't thank all of you enough. Let's stay positive, let's affirm those who are doing the work and refrain from criticizing. It's a great thing that the police department is now just about at a full complement. It's been, it's been a struggle. I believe that people were working a great deal of overtime and not having time off and really stretching themselves to the limit. And hats off to each one of them who served us as well as could possibly be done, and they went beyond the call of duty. And I'm just glad to hear that there's some relief coming and that, you know, that we're getting enough personnel in there now. So keep moving forward, folks, it's all good.
Thanks. Thank you for those kind words. I know we all here on council, you know, and all the elected officials in our community, we do what we do because we love this town, and that's the bottom line, so. I thank you. Mr. Kirkland, councillor Kirkland?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone who came out at the joint ward meeting. It was, I believe there was at least forty people, probably close to fifty there, and those who chose to stay and participate and do something productive and positive, it was a great thing. Everybody got to talk to who they wanted to talk to. It worked out well, it worked out well. So I just want to thank everybody who came out, spent their time, staff, citizens, councillors, you know, councillors, councillors were there and I appreciate that. So it was a great time and I appreciate everybody who was there.
Councillor Gary?
I just want to echo Joe's comments, you know, it was seven-thirty on a Thursday night. I know probably everybody that took the time to come out had better things that they could have done with their time, but because they care about their community, they took their time to come out and meet with Joe and me and some of the members of staff that were there. So I thank them, and I also want to particularly thank the staff members that came out, because, you know, you guys are paid, but that was certainly off-the-clock time because it was seven-thirty. So I appreciate you guys being there, and I really appreciate your taking time to have one-on-one interaction with the folks that showed up. I think that goes a long way in putting a face on Borough Hall and it just helps a lot. So thank you to you guys, and I want to continue to thank all those out in the community who are still continuing to be active in, you know, basically fighting crime, those that are still marching, walking, and just patrolling their own neighborhoods. I mean, you know, that's what it takes, the citizens to stand up and say no, and we're doing it, and thank you and keep up the good work.
Councillor Weed? Councillor Proxel?
I'd like to thank Cheryl, more councillor, excuse me, I was coming home, I noticed injured cat in my driveway, and she's the one I would call, and then she found, what, four kittens that were uncared for, and she took them in, I believe they're at Bill Sharon's house now.
They are currently in a rescue.
Oh, okay, I see.
So they were placed in a rescue.
So thank you very much.
You're welcome. So it does take, it does take a lot of effort and it takes a lot of money for those rescue efforts. So we have volunteered councillor Proxel for a dunking boot to be dunked since, since we now have six cats out of his war that we had to pick up the expense for.
I'm troubled.
So, so when you do see us out there fundraising, it is very important, it is very costly, it's very time-consuming, there's a lot of efforts. There was a lot of efforts that went involved in that particular rescue. So, you know, we would appreciate the support. Chestnut Street Park is going to be the Ward One and Ward Three next meeting location. I do apologize, we don't have a date yet since councillor Proxel and I were involved in our, in our rescue. I didn't get the chance to coordinate that, but we will, we will have a date and time for you for Monday's meeting to announce. But it will be at Chestnut Street Park. And I also want to echo Bonnie Heath's comments, because we as councillors know that there are a lot of things wrong, and we're working very hard as a team to come up with new ideas, to work together, to support each other, to bring those ideas forward, to get them out of committees, to get them implemented. So this is a fantastic team, and I'm really happy to be part of it.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor?
I'd like to just say that last night, the National Night Out was very exciting. I did get to visit each event. But more importantly, I'd like to mention one specific issue from the State Association of Mayors Conference that I was able to attend recently for three days in Hershey. And met a lot of mayors from different types of boroughs, different sizes, socioeconomic matrix and other dynamics, but one thing that really came down to a common denominator in every type of community in the state of Pennsylvania was the pervasive penetration of drug trafficking and the conditions that that brings to specific areas. Now, I'm not good at putting a positive spin on it, except to say that we must remain vigilant and tough on crimes. We were really fortunate to have members of the Federal DEA present, Drug Enforcement Agency, who was, were able to give us some insight into the actual facts that the importation of drugs from various nations is actually underwriting the economies of those nations and actually is supported by very high levels of government involvement with our very own government and other governments. So the problem is much more complex than any one particular person getting arrested, any one particular ring getting busted. Although we know those things will continue to happen, the presence of federal agencies in these issues is also necessary. I'm giving you a report from the conference, that those agents are able to come in, and they don't come in to look for the dealer on the street, the young kid who doesn't have anything to do, they're looking for the supply lines. And I tell you that when the supply line drives up and when there's no need, when there's no addict, there's no need for the supplier. So I would say these are major issues that affect the quality of life in our borough. Because drug use, as I mentioned, poverty as an anchor arm to various types of crimes that affect quality of life, drug use also spans every socioeconomic class. It does not have a rich or poor or an ethnicity as a face. So I'm going to continue to work one-on-one with small groups and work one-on-one with individuals to encourage resourcing for people who are struggling in addiction, whether it be through local communities, local churches within the community, you know, or whether it's through agencies that are working specifically targeting that area. But really, it's everybody's responsibility. You know, somebody who's walking around, quote-unquote, "with a problem," posing a problem, being a problem, is not just the police's issue. You know, we have many disputes in neighborhoods, you know, people don't get along. It's not a criminal issue every time neighbors don't get along, sometimes it's a civil issue. But I think our real task is restoring the sense of community that people can get back to old-fashioned negotiation. Just want to report one other thing, that I've started meeting with the class officers from the high school, and I put a charge to them. I put a charge to them as being elected by their school to have a stake in the climate of how the school operates. Now, there are some things of the school operation that are not positive. Those unpositive things must be addressed. Those unpositive things will not be swept under the rug. They come right out to the table, because that's how they get solved. One of the issues that was brought up was language. You know, when children go to school, they are taught about indoor and outdoor voices. There's a way to talk inside and there's a way to talk outside. That's a basic level of training for intonation and inflection. I gave them a challenge of a basic skill of reducing the violence of foul language. I think it's a very pertinent start, because it's a very pervasive problem. And at every level and every age, that's a problem. So if we want to talk about stopping the violence, that could be anchor one, and we're on it. That's all I have.
Okay, I want to thank you for attending that conference. I mean, that's, networking like that is the best way to get, you know, current information that's going on and so forth, so I thank you for doing that. I want to congratulate councillor Proxel, who's getting married. Thank you, Mr. Dromi. Within the next, fiance, is when they're going to make an honest man out of you? So, and also I want to thank Kurt Zwickel for the great article that was in the Mercury, his comments and so forth, and it was also, the editorial was highlighted, and, you know, with the things that, with the Schuylkill River going on, and, you know, he even mentioned the train, saying that that's a game changer. And I've said that also with the, that Schuylkill, or the Secret Valley train that's going to be coming between Bortown and Pottstown, that, you know, that definitely is going to be a game changer. It's going to bring economic development to this area that I don't think we've seen in twenty, thirty years, so he was really positive with that, and, you know, it's people like Kurt Zwickel, who sits in the background, and to make comments like that, he just does his job and really promotes this town and, you know, the Heritage Center and so forth. So, you know, he, you know, my hat's off to Kurt, so. That's it. We will have for the Monday evening, don't forget, six-thirty, we will be meeting here for a conditional use hearing on 454 King Street, and we'll be having the master traffic ordinance amendment also. So we are adjourned.